The members of the planning board, it looks like everyone's present except Richard, and we're trying to get Richard online here.
Hi John, I see John.
Hi.
I don't know Trudy, I know Dick.
Richard, are you here?
I don't know Owen, hi. Mark, I know Mark.
Hi.
Linda!
Hi.
I don't know Paul. Hi Nick.
Hello.
I don't see Ted. Hi Jerry, I know Jerry.
Hey Richard, could you try to speak here, or can you hear me at all? Okay, well we're gonna, we're gonna get started hopefully as we go through, but we do have a quorum of the board. I'm just gonna get the recording start. So we're currently recording, and we've got a meeting of the planning board, so I'm just gonna for the record state, all the planning board members are here, John Mayer, Mark Murphy, Cindy Tolles, Nick Burlingame, and Donna Mooney are all joining us. Everyone else is here as a member of the public. I'm the village attorney, I know it says Anthony Bates there, I'm Bob McCordick, and I'm just using Anthony's account, so.
Okay.
So don't get confused. So what we're gonna do is, I guess, the meeting is kind of officially called to order now, it's 6:04, and I'm going to discuss what the procedure is for this type of meeting, and also what the substantive review is for the planning board to consider, and then I'm going to turn it over to the planning board members, so.
Point of order.
First. Yeah, who's that?
This is Bill Houston calling. This meeting was not properly noticed, there's nothing on Facebook, and there's nothing on the village calendar. This is not a legal meeting under open meetings law.
Alright, so I'm gonna just start out by saying this. The only, this is a public meeting, but it's not a public hearing. So the only people who are allowed to speak at this meeting are those who are on the planning board. The members of the public, because this is not a public hearing, the public does not have an opportunity to speak at this meeting. There will be a public hearing held on this local law. It's scheduled for Monday night in front of the village board, and anyone who's on this program right now is welcome to attend Monday night and speak at the public hearing, but right now, this is purely a public meeting for the planning board members to review this law.
Even call.
Okay, so that's how we're gonna proceed. The planning board members will each be given an opportunity to speak and ask questions and make comments about this law, and, but it is an advisory nature that you're serving in right now. So the planning board, only the village board has the authority to approve or disapprove this law. The planning board has the authority to review and make a recommendation, a report of recommendation for or against this law, and that report goes to the village board. Alright, so that's your purpose here tonight, is to make a report, and that's required under section 300-61.3 of our local laws. Alright, so that's the procedure that we're acting under. In terms of the substance of this law, what we're going to do is, I'm going to review this law, I'm gonna explain what it is, and explain what the criteria is for the planning board members to look at.
Do you think we should all be unmuted?
I'm getting a bunch of feedback.
Yeah.
We're getting, I'm getting a lot of feedback, so it's hard to listen to just you. Can you mute all of us?
You need to mute me anyway, Bob, because I don't, I'm not going to be speaking, so you need to mute all of us who aren't going to be speaking.
Okay, I'll do that, I'll mute everyone right now.
You are muted. You can mute or unmute yourself by pressing star six.
Okay, so everyone's now been muted, hopefully that's better. Okay, good. So talking about the substance of this law, the, this law would amend section 300-22.3 of the zoning code to allow recycling facilities in the industrial zoning district. And a recycling facility is defined as a facility used for the receiving, temporary storage, disassembling, and processing of a single category of pre-sorted recyclable objects into their component parts for resale. It does not include junkyards. Each of the planning board members have been provided a copy of the law, as well as a copy of the criteria that you're supposed to act under. Now that criteria is set forth in 300-61.7, and I have emailed that to all the planning board members. So your job here tonight is to review this proposed law based on the following criteria. Number one, whether it amends, or whether it corrects an error or inconsistency in the zoning code, or meets the challenges of a changing condition. Number two, whether it is in substantial conformance with the adopted plans and policies of the municipality, and number three, whether it is in the best interest of the municipality as a whole. So that's the planning board's job here tonight, is to review this law in the context of that criteria. What I'm gonna do now is unmute each of the planning board members, and give them a chance to weigh in on this. So give me a moment here. Cindy, you're unmuted.
Okay, just a question, could you redo, repeat number two? Actually, number one, the beginning of it, and number two, all of it, I was trying to take notes.
Yes. Give me a moment to finish unmuting here. Okay, I've unmuted Cindy. Mark Murphy, are, can you say something?
Yes, I'm good.
Okay, you're unmuted. Nick, you should be unmuted, is that right?
I think so.
Yep. I'm having trouble finding.
John Mayer? He's next to me.
John.
He's airborne.
Yeah, okay, John, you're airborne?
Yes.
More of a scantable computers, so.
John, are you, can you say something?
Yes.
Okay, great, we can hear you now. And then Donna, what are you signed in as? Does anyone know what Donna is? So I can unmute her?
I didn't see anything that, hmm.
I don't see any.
I don't see her in the list of participants.
I thought she wasn't able to come, but I don't take my word on that.
No, when I took attendance at the beginning, she answered here.
Oh, she did, okay.
Yeah, I don't have a way to identify who she is on this list. Well, I guess I could unmute everyone and go through this again, so I'm gonna do that.
Sorry, let's answer.
Alright, I'm gonna unmute everyone. Donna, when I do, can you tell us what your name is on this? Donna, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Alright, what are you on this? What are you signed in as?
There she is.
I'm on the planning board. I don't know what you mean.
I need to be able to identify you on this, and you know what your.
742.
I said that word.
427.
I don't know what you mean.
I think her phone number is.
4271002.
4271002.
Yeah, yeah, 1002.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm just. I'm just on my phone, yeah.
Okay, thank you. So I'm gonna do this again, bear with me. Alright, we'll get this.
You are muted.
I had to get it.
Alright, let's try it again. I'll go through the roll call. John Mayer, can you hear me?
Yes.
Alright, Mark Murphy.
Yes.
Cindy Tolles.
Got it.
Nick Burlingame.
Yes.
Donna Mooney.
Yes.
Alright, great. Alright, so the, so I've given the explanation of the process and the local law. Did the planning board members have a question of what I explained?
Could you repeat number two?
Alright, I'm looking at the review criteria under section 300-61.7. There's A, B, and C. B is whether the proposed zoning ordinance text amendment is in substantial conformance with the adopted plans and policies of the municipality.
Thank you.
Okay. If someone's got a TV on in the background, can you turn it off? Or mute it, because we can hear you. Cindy, is that you? I think I see a TV back there.
No, but it's unmuted, it's unmuted.
Alright, somebody is.
I'll turn it off, but it's unmuted.
Okay, alright, so why don't we go through each of the board members one by one? John, do you have any comments or questions about this?
Not at this moment.
Okay. Mark, do you?
Not at this moment.
Okay. Cindy, anything?
No, not yet, I'm waiting for more.
Okay, Nick, anything?
Not yet, no.
And Donna?
I'm waiting also.
Okay. Well, so I, so what your job here tonight, I'll just kinda review again, is you're supposed to evaluate this law, take a look at it, and make an advisory recommendation for the village board, of whether or not they should approve this. So there needs to be some discussion among the planning board members as to whether you are in favor or against this local law. Does anyone have any comments they wanna make, or questions about that? We're gonna need some discussion, I can't, I can't lead this whole thing. Well, it seems to me.
Greco on yet?
Hello?
Do we have Dick Greco on yet?
Uh, no, he's, he's not, he's having trouble getting on, I guess.
Okay. Has everyone looked at the location?
Yes. It's a suitable location. Alright, we have a company, BAE, that works with hybrid batteries. We have a producer coming to town that is going to be making these batteries. It seems only fitting that we recycle what we create. Working in the auto industry, most of the original hybrids, their batteries are gonna come due for recycling and replacement. We can't just dump them in the landfill.
We're talking lithium batteries here?
Lithium batteries.
There's various sizes of lithium batteries. What are we talking about? We're talking AA, AAA, car batteries? No lithium car batteries, I know, except Tesla. What size batteries are you talking?
Well, so, you're talking about a particular project, the Sungill project, which obviously is in the background of this whole thing. But this proposed law would apply to any recycling facility in the industrial district.
Not just this specific one?
Right, and if there's a recycling facility that wants to come into the village, they would be allowed to under this law, a recycling facility as defined. Not a recycling center like a transfer station that recycles multiple different products. It's only recycling of a particular type of product.
But it would be in a limited area.
It's only in the industrial zoning.
Only industrial, thank you.
It would be prohibited from the commercial or residential districts.
What do we currently have?
Currently, it's not addressed. This particular thing is not addressed in the zoning code. Recycling centers are addressed, and that's a large-scale facility that would recycle multiple different products. That is not currently allowed in the industrial district. So this particular, this kind of thing, a focused recycling facility just isn't addressed one way or another in our local laws. So the point here is to address it, and to allow it only in the industrial district.
So if we made a change, it would be just for this situation only, and not for the future, for anybody else?
No, this would allow any recycling facility, as that term is defined, to be located in the industrial zoning district.
Could you read the definition one more time?
Sure. It is "A facility used for the receiving, temporary storage, disassembling, and processing of a single category of pre-sorted recyclable objects into their component parts for resale. Junkyards are excluded from this definition."
Thank you.
So it's, it's not my job to advocate for or against this. I can certainly provide or convey information to you, and the reason why this is being put forth are the initial comments that were made about kind of the need for recycling in this area, but as well as to promote business activity, it is, you know, arguably a job creation measure, promote tax revenue in the village. It's an economic development kind of a law.
It appears in here.
Go ahead.
I'm looking at section two, the amendment to section 370-2. It's very specific to this facility, correct?
When you say this facility, what are you talking about?
I'm looking at recycling facility. A facility used for receiving, temporary storage, what you just read.
That's correct, that's all it would allow.
Okay.
Right, anything that fits within that definition is what would be allowed in the industrial district.
Thank you.
So these are all activities that are currently done now by Taylor, other than the battery recycling. I mean, someone could come here and recycle paper, someone could come here and recycle glass.
Yes, as long as.
There's no, notice that there's no mention of the word incinerator, no mention, no mention at all.
Then not in the village. I'm sorry?
Taylor's not in the village, is it in Vessel?
No, what I was saying is, it's the type of activity that they do, the sorting and.
Right.
Right, so wouldn't, it wouldn't permit one of those large-scale, unsorted, transfer station type of a facility to come into the district? It's only for a single type of object, recyclable object.
So maybe like computers, computer electronics?
Maybe, yep, solar panels, batteries is obviously on everyone's mind.
About waste, is there hazardous waste listed in here?
Are you asking whether this would allow hazardous waste?
Yes, yes, I am.
Well, it doesn't prohibit hazardous waste. It doesn't address that at all. Hazardous waste is regulated primarily on the state level. It's heavily regulated by DEC, so this would not impact those hazardous waste regulations already in effect.
So being that this is in a neighborhood, would this be of best interest to look into this, or what kind of paperwork do you have for us to look at?
So again, you're, you're saying that this is, you're saying something's in a neighborhood. You're talking about the Sungill project, is that right?
The lithium batteries one, yes.
Okay.
It's in the neighborhood, there's a baseball park there, a pool, home, restaurant.
Right.
It's, it's, from what we understand, a volatile situation in a neighborhood like that. What kind of information can you give us to read and look over? This is, there's really not enough information right now.
Speaking?
This is Donna.
Okay.
Yeah, the, this would allow recycling in an industrial district, so as long as the proposal is within, in what's already been zoned as allowing for industrial uses, then it would be allowed. But I want to be clear that this, this particular law doesn't just apply to one use, not, it doesn't, doesn't just apply to the Sungill project, it's for any property within the industrial district. I will say that if there's, if you want information on the Sungill project, there is information available on the DEC website, as well as at the, at the library.
I'm trying to think of the industrial zone. I don't have my map right in front of me. I do recall that most of it is on the north side of the tracks, the railroad tracks, kind of what we refer to as the Huron campus, and there's also areas that are on North Street and the cut, so that would be included as well?
Any industrial, I believe.
Yeah, I think it is, yeah.
Yeah, the zoning map is available online, you can Google.
I'm gonna go grab, I'm gonna go grab mine, I have it right here.
Yeah, I've got it as well. It's anything that's marked in the brown sections, so there's a large part out by the airport, in the western part of the village, as well as the Huron campus area. And if you're online, you can just Google Village of Van de Cot zoning map, and it'll come right up.
We have the map.
So. So you can continue the discussion. I need to take a moment to go get my, my charging cord, I'm about to run out of batteries here, so bear with me a moment.
Did you get the map, Cindy?
Yeah, I am looking at it. I can hold it up, I don't know if that would be good enough. I don't think I can screen share unless he gave me the option to do it. Most of us are aware of what's not on this piece, which is the Huron campus. The other parts are bounding, bordering on East Franklin, some areas by Loader Avenue, some areas over by Duane and Jennings, and some areas that go further down by Page and Clara, so I don't know. If you can see, it's in the blue, I'm not sure if that's showing up at all. So I just wish industrial zones weren't close to houses. But most of the industrial is in the Huron area, but I do recall that there was some areas that were not.
You said blue, mine shows brown.
No, blue, blue, well, blue is industrial on my map. I mean, it could be different on other maps, but my legend shows it as blue, industrial.
Mine shows brown, if that's right.
Well, as long as it's the same area.
I believe so.
Okay.
But it seems to be a limited area that we would be, that we're discussing. Has anyone, has any other corporation expressed an interest at all in this type of a recycling facility? Anyone know?
IBM has been recycling electronics here for years.
Right, that's right.
I think that's the dilemma, is that, from what I'm gathering, is that we have been a community that has allowed a lot of things without regulation, and my guess is the thrust here is to just put some sort of boundaries and whatever you wanna call it, on the next groups that can continue to come. We do wanna encourage development in whatever way, we are an industrial area, so it is good to keep that in mind, to balance out what we have to offer, and I, I for one would rather see it regulated than be able to say, well, IBM's been doing it for a long time, because the next person will come along and just start to do it.
If they're in an industrial zone.
Pardon me?
If they're in an industrial zone.
Yeah, so we have to accept that we do have industrial zones. I'm not so sure I agree with how it's drawn in two areas, but it is an industrial zone that I agree with for the most part, and I, you know, I can understand the need to, you know, consider this as something that will help us going forward, so that we have something that we can point to, that it's, you know, we're not targeting anybody, we're just trying to keep things where they belong, and we wanna make sure they're a single item. They're already pre-sorted. The hazardous part, you responded to, that that's already addressed by the DEC, so it's just a matter of, you know, thinking about it maybe in different ways. I don't know, how does everybody else feel?
Well, the village was built around industry, and for some years now, many of these industrial buildings remain empty. I think it would be great to see some life in some of these facilities. In regards to the lithium ion recycling facility, I don't have enough information to make an educated decision at this time, but I do agree that some regulation would be good for some of these facilities.
What type of regulation are you referring to?
Well, even if it was a, at least if it was in our code, we would have an idea about what's going on. I mean, I know IBM, and there's probably, I think there's at least another recycling facility in the industrial zone right now. I mean, I'm not sure, I certainly worry about the health risk associated with the battery recycling facility.
It's a deadly concern.
That's the concern.
It's a huge concern because of the location.
Well, it's a concern because of the location, but the location is designed for industrial use right now. It has been. So we're not going contrary to the use of the property. What we're doing, we're amending the section of the law to allow this to come in.
Am I correct? We're not making a decision on the battery plan at all, we're just whether or not recycling is allowed in industrial, correct?
Yeah.
That's for the, that's for the village board to decide.
That appears to be.
Well, that's exactly true. Right, this is a recommendation and, and it would allow any recycling facility, as that term is defined, to be in the industrial district. The issue of whether Sung Eel fits within that, um, that definition is really something for the code enforcement officer to determine.
He's not here tonight.
No, he wouldn't be, I don't know if he's here, uh, he may be here, but, um, that, that's not something that he would weigh in on until he's presented with a permit application.
That's right.
For the code enforcement officer.
I can't see a problem if somebody has a good business model, uh, and wants to build a recycling center. I, I can't see, I can't see a problem. It's jobs, they're gonna have to fix these old buildings up or they're gonna have to demolish them and build something new. Um, you know, if it's contained inside a building and nobody's looking at piles of waste, uh, it's just another building with trucks going in and out.
It's an incinerator.
Did anyone address the traffic flow? On this particular property?
Uh, I can tell you that according to DEC's, uh, environmental review of the Sung Eel project, they've determined that there will be two truck trips per day to the facility.
Do they have a regulated route?
Uh, I believe there, there's DOT requirements on, on their routes. I, I can't speak to exactly what that is, um, but I believe that'd be the case.
But that's not really what we're, that's not really what we're discussing today.
Correct.
The way in and the way out. I think, I think at some point, the village board needs to address that. Uh, I do recall with the Town of Union, when National Pipe moved from Vestal to Maple, Ave or Maple Drive in Endicott, uh, they were assured that they had, um, an egress that was agreed upon and the trucks would go down by West Endicott, by the golf course, continue west on Seventeenth C, get on the highway at the, uh, exit entrance in the Hayawatha, sort of Appalachian area. Uh, and I live kind of near Main Street and there's not a day that goes by where I don't see many, many trucks filled with pipes going up and down Main Street. So the problem becomes, the problem becomes, from what people have said to me, uh, including somebody in the company, is, oh, the truckers are subcontractors and, you know, they're not our drivers. We recommend they take that route, but we don't necessarily, you know, whatever. They, they tend to take whatever route they want. So, you know, it's, you know, that is something, is what, how are they going? And with recycling, uh, you know, we're talking big trucks coming in, maybe small trucks going out, hopefully. Uh, but it would be something to consider, what routes they're taking.
This goes back to my original question, um, or one of my original questions. The, the, the pipeline, or not the pipeline, the pipe, the trucks carrying the pipes, they're huge trucks. They have to be, by definition. I don't believe we're talking the same type of vehicle that would be handling this type of, uh, uh, battery. I mean, it just makes sense to me that it would be a smaller type, maybe even a cargo van, I, I don't know. Um, we don't have any input on that. My, my, my guess is that, my belief is that, it would have to be a smaller vehicle. It's not going to be, excuse me, a major tractor trailer. But I haven't seen anything that would, that would define it.
Well, at this point, aren't we talking about generic recycling?
Yes, I think we are. I mean, I see it as generic recycling. I think some of us are gonna always go back to what's about to happen and that's fine. But I also think that this particular recommendation that we're being asked to consider is going forward, what if we have more recycling coming into our area? Do we want, uh, as part of our code, that it is allowed? And it is allowed in industrial and they have to go for a permit or whatever? I see it as something of that nature. I've heard two people say that, or at least one person say that there's already two instances where there's recycling already in an area where we don't have anything written, written down to regulate it. I would feel better with things of this nature that there has to be, there should be a system where they come before a code group or whatever, um, this implies. And I'm not talking specifically about the, the battery. I think that's, that's certainly one issue, one example. But I, I see this, like John does, as, um, perhaps future business coming here. Uh, what if it's glass?
There's Phoenix Recycling on Badger Ave.
Is that where it is?
Yeah, I don't know if it's still functional anymore, but it's, it, that's, I thought they did electronics.
Where's Badger?
Building down there, I believe you're correct.
That's where they recycle the bottle, the can, they're right across from the cans and bottles. I'm pretty sure that's a contaminated zone to begin with.
Where is that, John? What, what's it near?
Uh, that's right.
Okay, got it.
Now, the, um, just so you know, that this, if this goes through, the recycling facility would be in allowed use. But it would still be subject to a site plan review, uh, by the planning board, uh, as, as long as it is, it is a new use. So i- if they're proposing to build a new building somewhere in the industrial district, for example, construct a new building, then, uh, that kind of thing would need to go in front of the planning board for a site plan review, at which point the planning board could, uh, review the things that you always review during a site plan, access, ingress, egress, lighting, um, you know, uh, uh, traffic, all of those factors, if it is a new use. Now, that, there's a question, there's a different question as to whether the Sung Eel project would require a site plan review. I think that's a totally separate matter and that's for the code officer to decide, because they'd be proposing to go into an existing building. But if somebody's building a new structure, they would have to come in front of the planning board for a site plan under this proposal.
Well, how about a, how about a, like John Mayer was saying, how about buildings that do exist, that can be rehabbed? Why wouldn't they also have to go through the same procedure?
Yeah, I mean, that's a determination for the code enforcement officer to make. Um, generally, or often, uh, the fact is that if they're not making any, uh, changes to the exterior of the building, it's essentially just one tenant moving in, the other tenant moving out, that, that generally does not require a site plan review. But again, I don't want to step on the code officer's toes, that's, that's a determination he would make.
I believe we're all in favor of village growing, okay? We need more industry, we need, we need more jobs, obviously. That being said, I don't have enough information to pass on, to make a recommendation.
Okay? And are you talking about not enough information about this law?
Yes.
Okay.
I understand, I can look it up, I can, I can, I read everything that you've sent to us. But it almost seems to be open-ended.
What do you mean, Mark? What are you looking for?
I wish I could quickly answer that. I, I have the feeling that I'm, I'm gonna be building on something, making a recommendation on something that I do not have a good handle on. And I'm very uncomfortable doing that.
So you think we need more information?
Yes.
Uh, in what respect though? Uh, more def, the definition is there, what else do we need?
Definition is here, yes.
Well, Mark, think of it like this. Um, if this law were, were allowing grocery stores in a commercial district, uh, it would be, it would be exactly the same thing. It would allow grocery stores in the, in a commercial zoning district and it would define what a grocery store is.
I'm not happy with how this is going.
The information that you have, because that's what the legislative process is. Um, so this is.
Saying by definition, then?
I'm sorry?
All right, no, I, I'm with you now. This is, by ne, by definition, we're talking strictly about recycling facility, period.
As defined, yes.
As defined.
If something fits within that definition, it's gonna be allowed in the industrial district. If something does not fit within that definition, it's not going to be allowed.
I feel more comfortable with that.
Okay.
Someone else?
Uh, what, would there be any way that we would know how, you're saying two trucks a day? We need to know how these trucks are being brought in and brought out, for one thing, the route, regardless if the truck drivers are deciding which way they want to go in and out? And how they're really gonna be handled when they get in the facility?
I think you're talking about, you're talking about something that hasn't been approved yet. That's, that's, that's coming up on the twentieth. This is just a generic, this is a change to this rule. Uh, it's about a generic recycling facility, one that does not, that isn't even in existence right now. One that potentially might come here. Um, they could be recycling just paper, they could be recycling just glass, they could be recycling computer parts, we don't know what they're recycling. I think this is.
I think what I'm, I think what I'm, I'm hearing and reading some of the notes from the people who cannot speak, so I thank them for their notes, um, is that the concern, I'm guessing, uh, is that by doing this, are we giving a green light to the incinerating of lithium batteries that will pollute the area? So I for one, do not want to be a part of that. I would be happy to put this in place if it allowed future development to be regulated, so that we have a handle on it. I feel that we were pushed into the battery thing that we're all thinking about and it's coming at this pandemic time, when there's not much we can do with, with anything because courts are shut down and all kinds of things. So I'm not sure that, as a planning board member, I want to make a good decision about future projects. But I'm still hearing from people, does this impact the current project? I need to know that before I can vote. If it's going to give a green light to something that is still kind of, um, debatable or needs, we need more time for the people to listen to, uh, I, I'm sure that some people sitting here have been, um, on the inside track and have heard information that I have not heard. Uh, and yeah, they did have two public meetings and yes, they were way back. Uh, I didn't, don't remember hearing about either one of them and they came and went, that's my fault. Uh, but that is the concern of a lot of Endicott residents who live nearby and who remember, uh, the pollution from, you know, back ten, fifteen years ago and how long it took IBM to clean up. So does this, the, I guess what we need to know, does doing this give a green light to the company coming in?
By definition, on section two, it says recycling facility. Facility used for the receiving, temporary storage, disassembly and processing of a single category of pre-sorted recyclable objects, any of the component parts for resale. Junkyards are excluded from this definition. I believe that answers your question. It can't be something else, it's gotta be specifically what this, what, uh, section two says. Limits, uh, limits it to that, solely to that.
So, right, anything that meets that definition would be allowed. So, so the question of whether Sung Eel would be allowed is really, that's up to the code enforcement officer to make that determination.
So one person gets to make that decision?
He does, yes. And then, th, there's a process to review that, but that's, that's the way zoning works. Uh, there, there's a determination made by the code enforcement officer. Um, but yeah, I mean, Sung Eel may, may, would likely fit within that definition. I, I don't think, I don't think that needs to be hidden at all. But that, but that's really up to the code officer to decide.
Could this facility come to Endicott if this zoning amendment is not passed by the board?
Well, that's a really good question. Um, again, it, it would be up to the code officer to review the, the current code and make that decision. Um, this provides the code officer more clarity in making that decision.
Ultimately, the village board on Monday night is gonna have a public hearing.
Yes.
And they will make the decision whether or not this will be approved, correct?
Correct.
I don't have a problem recommending to them, that I don't have a problem now, after what you've discussed with me, after we've defined what I've read, and let them make the final decision after a public hearing.
So you're saying that the planning board should wait for a public hearing?
I don't think we can do it that way. I think we have to make a recommendation tonight, do we not? Or not, or not recommended?
Yeah, I mean, the, the point is to, to have this recommendation in before the village board votes on this. So yeah, I mean, the, the, the point is tonight to, to conclude this with, with some level of recommendation. Now, your recommendation could be, we recommend approval, you know, provided that you, you know, hear from the public and, and address public concerns or something along those lines. We'd have to. I'm sorry?
Based on more studies submitted to us, submitted to the, submitted to the, the village board? I think it's pretty black and white, what, what the, um, local law recycling says. That's, I don't think I can argue with that, that's exactly what it says. And by definition, it's there.
I don't know, um, I work in the middle of this pandemic, as many of us do. And, uh, it's Binghamton University which is struggling with all kinds of things that the Village of Endicott and other municipalities, industries, um, small businesses and large. Uh, right now, I just got off a two-hour meeting with them and we don't know what's happening this fall and it's the pandemic. I for one am overwhelmed with what I'm being asked to think about from the small person, my students, myself and my colleagues, all the way to Harvey Stenger, who runs the whole show. And I'm also wondering if this is the time to make big decisions when we're in the midst of something where there's no recourse? Is there recourse with so much shutdown? Uh, courts are shut, shut down. Uh, the village is, uh, moving forward, I appreciate that. They've had their Zoom meetings and whatnot. And I think this is a good, um, opportunity for people to, uh, listen in on. But I, I feel it's, it's a huge burden on my shoulders at a point in time where, um, if this is a worthwhile project, can, uh, you know, do we have to make quick decisions at a time when I'm feeling, um, I'm feeling that it's just, I don't know, not feeling good.
I think I'm, I'm overwhelmed also. It, it is too much at this time. Anybody that I've talked to about this says we don't have enough information. And how the general public is gonna be able to be at the meeting on Monday, but then you want to make the decision Monday? I don't think that's a timely or a wise thing to do.
I think the, what bothers me, not that it bothers me, but what, one comment was made was this will give this company, uh, a green light, basically. It'll give them a reason to believe that the planning board thinks it's fine. Uh, and. You know, and I know that the point today is to come up with the planning board approving or disapproving of something that probably should have been in the code a long time ago. Uh, I agree with that in a way, uh, because we, we need to be careful by what is, what is recycled. If it's glass, it doesn't bother me. Uh, if it's cardboard, it doesn't bother me. But we have, you know, hazardous ways to think about. Uh, we, once we become an area that accepts that, is there another one coming right behind it? And does this, by the planning board giving its stamp of approval, uh, make it far easier for this company to move forward? And I know there's a lot of people for it, there's a lot of people concerned. Um, and I'm not so sure, I mean, I just assumed that this was. Um, and I'm not so sure, I mean, I just assumed that this was to make a change in the code that should have been there. And it's not our job to make the code change, that's the village board of trustees, I get that.
They can make the change.
Yeah, they will, we do not, we do not. We just, we just give a recommendation, um, for that. I get that.
So where are we headed now for tonight?
Standby, I think.
Well, I, I, I mean, generally, the way this would go is someone would make a motion, uh, and you can word it however you want to word the motion, uh, and if that's seconded, we can have a vote on it. Um, if, if you're comfortable making the recommendation.
I for one could not make a recommendation to go to a vote, um, so it won't come from me. I feel that it's ill-timed and I understand why we're doing it as a municipality. I think it's a really good idea, uh, and I, I applaud whoever it was that came up with this, that they saw it wasn't there. Uh, it's deficient to not have it there. But I'm really concerned about the economic time we're in, the legal time we're in, and people feeling like there's no recourse, there's no time to think about what's, you know, what this is going to project. And it could be, it could be the safest thing, it could be well-regulated, uh, you know, uh, I don't know, I'm just wondering about the, um, not that it's lack of information, but the fact that, uh, we need maybe more opportunity for more people to hear from this company, rather than, you know, what we had.
I think more of the public needs to hear about it rather than in a Monday meeting and then decide. I, I'm not comfortable on making a motion for this right now.
I don't either, I don't have enough information at this point.
I think we need to hold it off.
Is there a way to do that, um, Bob?
Well, um, no, I mean, this, your, your, uh, your role here is purely advisory. Um, so if you're not intending to make a, a determination, then you've essentially, um, passed on your, your role as whether or not to provide advice to the village board on this law. Uh, so if we conclude this hearing, or this meeting rather, without a motion, then that's fine and, and the village board will go forward with the law without a, um, without a recommendation by the planning board.
What if we make a recommendation to the board and it gets voted down, if it was not approved?
You mean, what if one of you makes a motion right now?
Correct.
And if it gets seconded?
And then voted on.
Then we have a vote, and as, if there's three people that vote in favor of it, then it becomes the official recommendation of the board. If you don't get three votes, then there's no action taken.
Okay, I'll make a motion. That the local law making recycling facilities a permitted use in industrial zones be recommended by the planning board. Is that worded properly?
Recommended for approval?
Recommended for approval.
Okay.
That is to like a second.
Well, well, so there, there's a motion on the table now by Mark. Does anyone want to second that motion?
I missed the last part of it.
So it's a, it's a motion by the planning board that the local law be recommended for approval?
Yeah, I will second it.
Okay, so that's a, a motion by Mark, a second, um, by, was that John?
Yes.
Okay, and what I'll do is I'll go with a, a roll called vote. Uh, Mark, how do you, how do you vote? Mark, I, I didn't hear your response, did you respond?
I said aye, I did.
Oh, I'm sorry, so Mark says yes, aye. John, how do you vote?
I say yes.
Yes, Cindy, how do you vote?
Um, I vote no, I think we need more time.
No, Nick, how do you vote?
At this time, no.
And Donna?
I vote no, we need more time, please.
Okay. So, uh, based on that, there, the, the motion did not carry, which means there's no action by the planning board at all right now? If someone could make, make another motion if they wanted to? And it could be, you could, if you want to get creative with it, it can be a motion to approve it, um, provided that the village board do X, Y, and Z, if that's what, uh, you, you're inclined to do.
Or at a later date, even?
Well, it hasn't, it, it's been, um, publicized, right, for a public hearing?
Yeah, that's the normal process, Donna, is, is there's a, a public hearing conducted. We, we do this all the time for local laws at almost every board meeting. Uh, we'll do a local law with a public hearing, so there's nothing unusual about, uh, about this process. I, I understand that it's a controversial issue, but I don't want you to think that, um, that there's something unusual about putting a law forward for a public hearing and then voting on it, uh, that's something that the village board does all the time.
You know, I understand that, but I think that, uh, in all fairness, that there's so much going on that is, um, the pandemic. Uh, it has offended everybody, including me, I'll just speak for me. Uh, I, I don't feel like I've been in the loop, uh, I don't feel I've been a part of a public hearing. It's my own fault if that's happened, but recently, there's no way I could add one more thing to my plate. Um, so I, I would be happy to entertain it after more information. If the public hearing gives us more information on Monday, uh, and then we want to meet after that, I don't know if, if the board members see that as enough time or enough information. I'm not sure what, what will come of that. Are the people from that company willing to come on Monday? Uh, I know they did come two other times, uh, apparently, I don't know. So.
I don't believe that's in our purview.
Pardon me?
Um, I, I don't, I don't think that's part of our responsibility.
Okay.
That's the village board.
Uh-huh.
That's, that's the reason for, for the public hearing coming up Monday night.
Right, I mean, the, the point is, so the, the point of the public hearing is so that the village board can hear from the public. The point of this process is so the village board can hear from you, the planning board.
Well, we did, we, we spoke, um, uh, you know.
Well, no, there, there, there hasn't been an action taken. There, there, the, the denial of the motion doesn't mean a negative recommendation. It just means that you, you haven't acted at all.
So we have to make a specific motion, giving, giving the trustees a roadmap?
Really, so I'm going to go back to the, to the legal standard here. So the, it, your, your role is to prepare a report that evaluates the proposed amendment in light of adopted plans and the relevant portions of the zoning ordinance and the review criteria that we went through. So your, your report, if, if this is how you want to do it, if you would prefer not to make a recommendation of for or against, but prepare a report evaluating the law and providing some comments or thoughts about it, I think that would be consistent with, uh, what you're called upon to do under the zoning code. If that's, because what I'm getting here is I don't think we're going to get some kind of up or down, yes or no here out of you guys, and, and I get that. Um, but if, if you want to, um, bullet point some, some things that you want the village board to consider, we could do that and see if we could come up with a few things that, uh, you can get a majority of people to agree to.
How do we do that?
Well, um.
Public meeting, um.
I mean, my thought, Bob, is that we have taken a vote. And just sorry, uh, two people voted one way, three voted another. So it was, in some respects, a split decision and it was not unanimous to recommend. In fact, it was the opposite. So, and most of us added, the three who voted against it, why? So I don't think I want to do a bullet point. I think the people that are in charge can do the bullet point. I know they'll do the bullet point on Monday. And I expect the same people that are here would be interested in hearing that on Monday. And I think that's the piece that's missing. I'm very uncomfortable voting for something before the bullet points. Uh, who knows, I might change my mind. I've only heard secondhand good things. Uh, I don't want to stay open-minded, but I simply cannot vote for it today and I did not because I need more information. Uh, and I've heard, you know, all five of us speak in one way or another. I don't think we need to redo. I, I think unfortunately, fortunately, um, the vote is there.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not saying you should redo it. Uh, I'm, I'm going back to the text of the code and, and looking at what you're charged to do, which is to prepare a report that evaluates the, the proposed amendment. And if the conclusion of tonight is that you've reviewed it and you've determined that you don't want to provide the village board a report, um, then, you know, that, that might be just where we end. I think that's acceptable. Okay.
We wouldn't be able to prepare a report at this time because we don't have enough clear information. And Monday night is, is pretty close.
Could we make a motion stating that we cannot make up our minds for a recommendation or a recommendation to approve or disapprove this local law?
Yeah, I, that's exactly what I was thinking, Mark. So I, I, I was thinking of a, a motion, um, to decline to approve or disapprove the law and to recommend, um, that the board conduct additional, uh, review, uh, and evaluation.
By what board?
By, by, by the village board, I, I think you're saying, is that right?
Yes.
Is, is that what I'm hearing? I don't want to put words in your mouth, but.
That's from me, yes. No one else? I think, I think Cindy, that, that's what you were trying to get at.
Uh, yeah, it is. It, uh, but right now, um, I just feel that I would like to hear the board first. I understand that the planning board is important, but at this point, because of the scenario that is just a hundred-year flood-type thing, uh, it's the pandemic that has thrown so much at us that I don't think the normal person is really, um, doing extra. Uh, we're asked to social distance and stay home. Have I gone to any meetings? No, I haven't. Do I have time to go to them online? That's even hard because of my workload at the university has required me to do more than I've ever had to do. So I'm so uninformed on this, uh, that I, I just don't feel that I can say recommend, to not recommend or whatever. I really want to hear what the board has discovered. I think they're the piece, they're the group that has information that, um, I will make time for on Monday. But as a planning board member, I, I would vote against a wishy-washy, um, thing. I, I, I can't, uh, I don't know how else to put it. I didn't mean for it to come out that way. I just feel that, uh, it was a good idea for the actual piece that needs to be changed in the law. But now that I see that it might give a green light to a company that so many people are polarized about, I think we've put the cart before the horse. I think that I might feel better, a lot of people might feel better, maybe not, after Monday night's meeting, and then the planning board, uh, might be, uh, able to meet.
Well, the, the problem Cindy with that is that the, the planning, the, the whole point here is for the planning board to have, for the village board to have your input. So you're kind of reversing the, the process here, so.
Because we don't have information, they do, they do.
The village board is the one that makes the decision. So they're looking for, the, the point here is for, for the, to give the planning board a chance to provide input on the law. If you decide you don't want to provide input on the law, you don't have to and the village board can move forward with it. And right now, there hasn't been a motion that's been approved, so the, the, the planning board just hasn't acted.
Yeah, I think we, I think we've done a lot of discussion and, you know, I've been around the village board for about three years and I know that a public hearing can happen without action. So a public hearing can happen on Monday and there might be so much to go through that maybe they don't get it all done and they do another public hearing. I mean, recently, we've done public hearings, I've been at them, where there's been a push to make a decision because the developer has to develop and there's a timeline. Uh, and this is essentially the same thing, this is a company that has a timeline. Um, but I, I'm just concerned about the fact that our focus has been to keep safe and keep away. I mean, both my husband and I are compromised. Uh, we haven't left this house, I haven't, he has, but I, I won't go anywhere. Uh, I'm frightened beyond belief. So I think that we're in a pandemic scenario that has thrown a spin on everything. So I for one still feel as a planning board member that I'm out of the loop, okay, for whatever reason, and I can't apologize, it's been tough. So I'm really looking forward to Monday being maybe the first public hearing. Uh, and a win-win could be that we give ourselves the opportunity uh, to let the village board present what it knows. We don't have the knowledge, at least I do not. I'm not going to speak for John or Mark or Donna or Nick, but I don't feel, I can vote on something that I don't have the information that I might get on Monday. I wish this would be after Monday and then I think we might be able to make a better decision. So I don't know. If anybody else wants to speak up, uh, I think we're starting to repeat.
We all made our positions known by the vote. I mean, I put it out there just to get, just to get something going.
Yeah, I know, I know, but we already voted, so.
We voted on it, fine, so.
Nobody seconded it, I, I will not.
Yes, yes.
I don't know, I can, I mean, somebody else will.
It, it was seconded and, and there was a vote, so there, there was, well, I, I was talking about Mark's, Mark's motion previously.
Oh, I'm, I thought you were talking about his second motion.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Do it on that one.
Right, so. Okay, so the, the report that will come out of this meeting, if there is no motion that's approved, so the report out of this meeting will be that the planning board met and discussed the local law, um, but did not, uh, uh, make a motion to approve any particular report or whether it's in favor, against, or any comments, it'll just be essentially a pass, if that's what you're, you're saying.
I don't think we can do anything else.
Until you can get a motion with three votes, that's, uh, that's how it works.
Well, the votes against it, it, it wasn't-
No, it, well, it'd have to be, y- y- you're, you're looking for a motion, uh, that's approved. The, the motion that was-
I understand.
The motion that was presented was, was denied.
We didn't approve or just approve?
I- i- it was a proposal-
Right.
-that was denied, and nobody has set forth another motion that, that's been seconded and gotten three votes. That's the only way this board can act, is if you have, uh, a motion that's, uh, seconded and a majority vote.
We have to leave it at that.
Yeah.
Because it's not going to any place in the other way.
Unless the planning board meets after the public hearing where there's more information. Uh, I, you know, I'm not comfortable voting any other way than I did.
Okay.
I'm not.
I understand your position.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Okay, so, uh, the report will be to the village board that there, that there was no action taken by the planning board on this.
Can we adjourn, um, and not close it out and meet after? Is there, I mean, I don't know the legal things that you know.
No, I mean, you-
Because I'm guessing that, go ahead.
When you meet to talk about a public issue, if there's a quorum of the board, you've got to do it in, in public, in this kind of a form.
Okay, so you don't adjourn it because of lack of information or whatever? Three of us expressed basically the same thing.
Well, well, I, I've heard some comments. I haven't seen any action by the board. So uh, i- i- when, when you say three of you have expressed basically the same thing, that, that doesn't happen until there's a motion and a vote. I've heard comments.
Well, we voted no.
No. You, well, you, you, you did not-
Why doesn't someone make a, make a motion to, um, recommend to the, to the trustees that we do not approve of this local law? Would that, would that satisfy it?
Say it again?
Why doesn't someone make a motion saying that we do not approve, or we do not recommend that this local law be adopted?
I think the stalemate is, we just don't have enough information. I'm not natu-
I totally agree with you.
I'm not naturally opposed to the recycling amendment.
Neither am I.
I, I would welcome-
You don't have enough information.
That's right. I would welcome business, and I just worry, obviously, it all boils down to this battery recycling facility, and we're all worried about public health risk. If there were no public health risk, I would have no problem, um, supporting this amendment. At this time, I cannot because I do not have enough information.
Why don't you make a motion to that effect?
I could do that. Um, I'm not exactly-
Yeah, let me, let me see if I can help you with that. Um...
Is this Nick?
Yes, it is.
Okay, that's Donna.
So, Nick, would you be comfortable with a motion not to recommend approval or denial of the local law due to a, um, a lack of information at the current time?
Yes.
I second it.
I agree with that.
Thank you.
Yep. Nick and Cindy.
All right, so hang on, let me, I'm just catching up with you. Nick made the motion, Cindy seconded?
Mm-hmm, uh-huh.
All right, let, let me just take a roll called vote here. So Nick?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Uh, Mark?
Yes.
Donna?
Yeah.
All right. So the report to the village board will be that you have not recommended approval or denial of the law, um, due to a lack of information.
Yes.
Good.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Um, that will conclude it. So, uh, there, there's nothing else on the agenda.
Motion to adjourn.
Uh, so, yeah, motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Okay, we're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Interesting.
Okay, well, that was very, very interesting, wasn't it? So there was a lot of discussion about health impacts. I mean, it sounded like there was a lot of discussion at the beginning that was just kind of like vague and kind of confused. I thought it was very interesting that somebody mentioned that Geotis is an existing recycling facility in an industrial zone, and they didn't have to change the zoning for that. I thought it was interesting that they, um, they said that they, there was a recycling, a bottle recycling place that existed, uh, that is an industrial zone. They didn't change the zoning for that. So they're trying to say, that the, the village mayor is trying to say that this is not an incinerator, and they aren't voting to approve an incinerator. They're appro- uh, they're voting to approve a recycling facility, which really doesn't, uh, doesn't really cut it. Now, what I want to tell you all right now is that we are going to be having, uh, right after this, a call-in, and I'm trying to get you the call-in credentials right now. Um, uh, we're going to do a call-in, and I'm going to put it in the, uh, comments. Here are the comments. This is the call-in. So if you want to be a part of this planning discussion among a bunch of, uh, citizens that, um, uh, can I edit this comment? I want to edit it. Oop, let's try it again. Edit this. Uh... Okay, that's the dial-in number. That's the call-in number. So if you want to be a part of the conversation, please, uh, dial this number. Check the comments right now. In fact, let me try to make a graphic right now, and just try to put it up. Uh, Endicott Planning Board. I'm just going to put it right here. Um... That's the dial-in number for the community. I'm going to say the, uh, the no- No incinerator planning call. Um... Okay, there it is. No incinerator planning call. Please dial that right now if you want to be part of the community discussion about how we're going to try to stop this incinerator. So call right now, and thank you for attending. Um, I would ask you to, please subscribe to the Bill Houston Podcast. You can like it on Facebook, but the best thing to do is to go to YouTube and cl- and, uh, uh, click, um, uh, what's it called? Uh, subscribe? Uh, no, it's got a different name. It's, um, uh, I can't think what it is now, but it's basically subscribe to my YouTube channel, uh, Bill Houston Podcast, and click the bell and select n- uh, all notifications. And that way, when I go live, you will get a notification. That's the best way to keep in touch with what I'm doing here. And, uh, that's it. Thank you so much.